The there's municipal code, nor is there anything under the West Chicago City Code. It would provide any basis for an interim or temporary appointment to those three positions. Those are specifically applied or by statute as well as by the city code. So there is no temporary appointment power. That is something that would be placed on the agenda at the next city council meeting or special meeting if it's called for those to be on the agenda so they are in conformance with the Illinois Comedians Act and so that the matter be presented with those appointments and have those appointments presented to the city council for advice and consent. There is a provision under relevant law and under the city code that any individual that are not appointed, they remain in their positions unless and until they are replaced with the procedure that I just provided to you until their successor is duly sworn, appointed and sworn. So that is the law relative to appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Next, we have public comments. Public comments, just when your name is called, please step up to the podium, say your name, please limit your comments to three minutes and direct them to the chair. Do we have any public comments? Do we have any?
I do not have a public comment.
Next, we have the acceptance of the official canvas for the April 1st, 2025 consolidated election. Paul.
Need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, can I get a motion first? Alden Brown, second by Alden Switesk. Paul.
Alden Brown.
Hi.
Alden Switek.
Hi.
The Venus.
Hi.
Alden Marano.
Hi.
Alden Stow.
Hi.
Alden Smith.
Hi.
Alden Burge Ferguson. Alden Debus.
Aye.
Alden Detmer.
Aye.
Alden Howlett.
Aye.
Alden Sheehan.
Aye.
Alden Bebe.
Aye.
The passes.
Great, the passes. Based on the official canvas, Paul, I received the highest number of votes. Ward one, we have Julieta Garcia for Ward one, Heather Brown for Ward two, Denise Corretto Munoz for Ward three, Sandy Debus for Ward four, Christopher Switek for Ward five, Carlos Benasoto for Ward six, Matthew Myers for Ward seven, and Daniel Bowley for Mayor. The next item is qualifying the newly elected officials. Is there any manner that would render any of the newly elected officials not qualified for office? No, very none. We will move to the administration of the old sub-office for the newly elected officials. Okay, one, we're gonna Yeah, all right. If the newly elected officials just want to go up front here, we're gonna issue the old office.
And we are very fortunate this evening to have with us the Honorable Bonnie M. Wheaton. Judge Wheaton is the chief judge of the 18th Judicial Circuit, has served the residence of DuPage County well, both as a practicing attorney and as a judge, and she was elevated to the position of chief judge based upon her legal scholarship as well as her courtroom demeanor and just complete package for serving as a judge. So it's my pleasure to introduce to you all the Honorable Bonnie Wheaton.
One, two. Please raise your right hand, please, Warren. Repeat after me. You're trying to tell yourself your separate Aye. State your name.
I am
Having been elected
Having been elected
To the office of Alderman.
To the office of Alderman.
In the city of West Chicago.
In the city of West Chicago.
In the county of DuPage.
In the county of DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Alderman.
Of the office of Alderman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I'm going to give the other bodies, being the Volby, twice, once in Spanish and then in English. I will add a little bit of the official, the person, those spaces in those idiomas, the Spanish and English. Repeat after me. I, Daniel Bowley.
I, Daniel Bowley.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the office of Mayor.
To the office of Mayor.
In the city of West Chicago.
In the city of West Chicago.
In the county of DuPage.
In the county of DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Mayor.
Of the office of Mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Yo, Daniel Bowley.
Yo, Daniel Bowley.
Al ser electo.
Al ser electio.
A la oficina de la alcaldia.
A la oficina de alcalde.
De la ciudad de West Chicago.
De la ciudad de West Chicago.
En el condado de DuPage.
En el condado de DuPage.
Puro solemnemente.
Puro solemnemente.
A cuidar a la Constitución.
A cuidar a la Constitución.
De los Estados Unidos.
De los Estados Unidos.
Y la Constitución.
Y la Constitución.
Del estado de Illinois.
Del estado de Illinois.
Y contribuir realmente.
Comprender realmente.
Las responsibilidades.
Las responsibilidades.
De la oficina.
De la oficina.
De la alcaldia.
De la alcaldia.
Al ilegal saberes y entidades.
Ami el gayar, sabes y entidades.
Que es así.
Things that I would like to share. Thank you, algunos comentarios que me gustaría compartir. And everyone see and hear me back there and the way back resources of the building break. When I was a kid, my family would take train trips. Cuando era niño, mi familia tomó viajes de tren. We never traveled on planes because my dad was afraid to fly. One of the things that I loved and still love about trains is the community that forms in the time that you are there together. Una de las cosas que me encanta de los trenes es la comunidad que forma en el tiempo que estás ahí. We would pick the train to Portland, Oregon. It's a 48-hour trip. And you got to know the people sitting next to you intimately, whether you liked it or not. If they stored, you were sleeping together, you were eating together, you were all sharing the same bathrooms. Some people don't like that. Compartes todo con las personas que están en el tren contigo cuando estás tomando un viaje así de 40 horas de Chicago aboard in Oregon. What I discovered that I loved about it was the community that developed. You'd have complete strangers that would be talking to each other. You'd have someone helping a mother that was struggling with some young children and maybe needed help with their infants. Lo que me encantó era la comunidad que desarrolló por medio del viaje. Tal vez alguien ha ayudado a una mamá que necesitaba ayuda con sus amigos. So as we, as a community, come together, my question is, what is it that unites us? What is it that we have in common? Those two days on the train, it was just the fact that we were stuck together. Los dos días en el tren estábamos juntos y no teníamos otra opción. Pero mi pregunta es, ¿qué es lo que tenemos en común? ¿Qué es lo que nos hace una comunidad? And I think that the answer to that question is very important. We live in a society that is polarized. People don't listen to each other. We get tired of seeing all the money spent on elections and dirt being thrown. Vivimos en una sociedad donde nos cansamos de ver todo, todo lo división, que la gente no nos escucha, nosotros a los otros. Vivimos en una sociedad donde estamos muy divididos. And it's very easy to become, to become distressed and lose hope in what is our system of democracy. And there's a lot of people that are struggling right now on both sides of eyes. There are people that feel like systems are broken. I, es muy fácil perder la esperanza en nuestro sistema democrática. Hay mucha gente que siente que el sistema está quebrada y en los dos lados hay mucha gente que han perdido su esperanza. And I want to say that in the last six months, I knocked on about 4,000 doors personally and I spoke to many of you that are here today. I spoke with over 2,000 families. And it was incredibly encouraging to me and restored a sense of my hope in our system. Me animó mucho hablar con los miles de ustedes, con quienes hablé en los últimos meses, y restauró algo de la esperanza de nuestro sistema democrático. We live in a system that has sometimes failed, sometimes dramatically in many years to provide, provide liberty and justice for all. Vivimos en un sistema que a veces ha fracasado en provería libertad y justicia para todos. And yet, the principles of our democratic system, that people could be governed by the people, holds within a seed of hope for a more perfect union that is truly a land of the free, one out of many. Pero los principios de nuestro sistema democrático tienen las semillas de esperanza para una unión más perfecta, como dice nuestra declaración de independencia. Una unión más perfecta y libertad y justicia para todos. We are all different. If you look around this room. Mira alrededor de dónde están, todos somos diferentes. West Chicago, what is it that we have in common? It's not our cultural heritage. No es nuestra cultura. It's not our likes and affinities and hobbies. No es nuestros pasatiempos. It's not even our language. No es nuestra idioma. The reason that it has encouraged me so much to talk with you, all of you, so many of you, is that in discussions of national politics, we're talking about things that are very important and yet oftentimes very separated, very distanced from where we are. We're oftentimes talking about things that we are not personally going through. But when I'm talking to people at their doorstep about West Chicago, it is, it is the bedrock of what the democratic system is about. And I'm not the only one that does this. Each one who is run for office here has gone door to door and talked to people. And those issues that we are hearing, there are things that are so personal to our lives, things like our trash pickups, things like our water in our sewer, things like, can I put a deck on my house, things like, you know, who can I talk to about my water bill? Las cosas nacionales muchas veces son muy distantes, pero las cosas locales nos afectan de manera tan grande. Estamos hablando de cosas como la basura, como nuestro sistema de agua o de drenaje. Puedo poner un patio en mi casa, con quién puedo hablar de mi bill de agua? Y son cosas que nos afectan tanto. And so I'm not saying that it's easy by any means. No estoy diciendo que es fácil por ninguna manera. There are important things that we will discuss and we will oftentimes disagree on. Hay cosas bien importantes que vamos a hablar, discutir, y a veces vamos a estar, vamos a tener un desacuerdo. But our system is based on this idea that we start with what we have in common. Nuestro sistema está basado en la idea que empezamos con lo que tenemos en común. We have people who run for office and make opposing claims to represent the people that they would like to vote for them. Tenemos gente que, que son candidatos para una oficina y dicen que van a representar la gente que, que van a votar. And at the end of the day, we vote for the person who we think will best represent us. Al fin del día votamos por la cosa, la persona que pensamos que va a representarnos mejor. Sometimes we make mistakes. Some people might think that I'm a mistake. A veces nos equivocamos. Algunos piensan que equivocaron conmigo. And yet, this is our system of democracy. At the end, we come together and we try to work for the good of the people because of what we have in common. Al fin del día nos unamos, nos unimos y tratamos de trabajar por el bien de las personas, por lo que tenemos en común. One administration may have ideas about something and the next administration has different ideas. They change things. It's an imperfect system. Una administración tiene ideas y la siguiente a veces tiene diferentes ideas y cambian las cosas. Es, es un sistema que no es perfecto. But despite that, it is our system. Es nuestro sistema. And it is what brings us together y es lo que nos une. And spite is never acceptable. Patriot is never acceptable, dividing into factions and refusing to listen. It's not an option. No es una opción del odio, no es una opción la embargo, el dividir en facciones y negar de escucharnos. No son opciones. So what do we have in common? Que tenemos en común. First, we all want to live in a city that safeguards the liberties and freedoms we value. Primero queremos todos vivir en una ciudad que guarda las libertades que valoramos. We're part of this big experiment called democracy, American democracy, that's now more than 230 years old. Son parte de una experimento, un experimento que se llama la democracia. The right to speak our minds, to worship or not worship as we choose, the right to gather and debate. Los derechos de hablar como queremos, de discutir las cosas, de adorar o no adorar como queremos. Los derechos de juntar y discutir las cosas. These are not abstract ideas. They're the foundation of how we live and may have to be protected every day. Estas cosas no son ideas, este, abstractas, sino que cosas que necesitamos cuidar cada día, cada año. Secondly, we share a deep and universal desire to live for our children, the best chance for success that we can give them. Segundo que compartimos el deseo de dejar para nuestros niños, para nuestros hijos, el mejor oportunidad para éxito que les podemos dejar. Whether that's through our schools, through safe streets, opportunities to learn, to grow, to dream about a business. Por las escuelas, calles seguros, el aprendizaje. Por soñar de tener un negocio. Everything that we do today should be measured by its impact on the next generation. Todo lo que hacemos debe ser medido por el impacto en la siguiente generación. Then lastly, thirdly, we, we all want to live in a city that cares about and takes care of its own. Tercero, yo creo que todos vivimos en una ciudad que es positiva, en una ciudad que cuida, que cuida y protege sus individuos. That means looking out for our seniors.
Do you want to give?
Yes. My lungs are not that healthy. That means me looking out for our seniors, making sure that families don't grow hungry or be left behind homeless. Esto quiere decir cuidar a nuestros ancianitos, cuidar los que no tienen comida, los que no tienen casa. Those things that compassion should guide our policies just as much as common sense does. Esas cosas deben de guiar nuestras políticas como el sentido común. These are not values of one political party or another. Estos no son valores de un partido u otro. They're human values and I think they're what makes West Chicago great. Estos son valores humanos y esto es lo que hace nuestra ciudad tan grande. So to those of you who voted for us, thank you for believing in us. And I do pledge to do everything in my power to serve this community and represent you to the best of my ability. Para los que votaron por nosotros, quiero decir que voy a hacer todo lo que puedo para representarles y a lo mejor de mi habilidad ser voz para ustedes. To those who didn't vote for me, a los que no votaron por mí, I pledge to do everything in my power to represent you to the best of my ability. Yo prometo hacer todo lo que es en mi poder para representarnos a ustedes en lo mejor que puedo. We may not always agree, but I believe that we have more common, more in common than what divides us. Tal vez no somos, siempre estamos de acuerdo en todo, pero tenemos más en común que lo que nos divide. So thank you and let's get to work to build a better West Chicago. Thank you. The first thing that I want to do is pull items eight and nine from the agenda. The primero que quiero hacer es quitar números ocho y nueve de la agenda. That does not that does not require a vote for me. For that. One second, one second, Heather. So, yes, that was on the agenda, but I'm pulling that off of the agenda. Yes.
It is on the agenda. It is previously been voted on. I don't need a microphone. I'm good.
For the people.
Point of order. This item has previously been voted on by city council and staff and has passed 14 to zero. That is what I'm stating and it is illegal to be pulled. Pass two.
That will matter. It may be helpful to have a microphone runner if anyone wants to volunteer. Okay, great. Thank you so much. I think they had somebody on this side. That.
Just confer with Alden Brown.
Okay. Concurring, Alden Marano concurs with Alden Brown.
I concur with Alden Brown.
Okay.
I concur.
Alden Smith concurs with Alden Brown. Alden Howlett concurs with Alden Brown. Alden Switek concurs with Alden Brown. Sandy Debus, Alden, Alden Debus concurs with Alden Brown. And Alden Sheehan concurs with Alden Brown. Alden Bebe concurs with Alden Brown.
Alden Brown.
Thank you. Alderbin Burge Ferguson also pinkers with Alden Brown. Yes, Alderbin Smith.
Can we get a legal analysis from an attorney, Pat Vaughn?
Yes, I'm gonna ask for two legal analysis. I'm gonna ask for a legal analysis from Mr. Vaughn and then I'm gonna ask Mr. Jacobson to come up and go a legal analysis as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, in order for an item to be pulled from the agenda, it would require a, because it was placed on the agenda by the city council, and in order to remove that item, it would require a motion to table it, table that to a date specific or a date certain. Second on that motion, motions to table are not debatable. My recommendation would be to do those one at a time with each item. I have receiving a separate in. Thank you. Mr. Jacobson.
Thanks, Mayor. So the mayor gets to create the agenda and pull things from the agenda. Wouldn't be a table, wouldn't be a motion to table, motion to tables for the same date to be heard, it'd be a different motion if you wanted to continue with Jacobson's bag. Regardless, it's up to the mayor on the agenda.
Okay.
Point of order.
Alden Brown.
Does that have attorney?
Yeah.
James.
That is not the city attorney, so he has no way on this. And we respond, our city attorney, we're all of our advice.
So I've invited Mr. Jacobson here to provide legal counsel as well.
But he would be in the public, not speaking on behalf of anybody.
Counsel didn't concur with him.
So I invited Mr. Jacobson to come and address the council.
Council did not agree with Mr. Jacobson.
No, it didn't. Thank you. My next item is that I am going to declare a vacancy in the office of city administrator.
Point of order.
I am going to declare vacancy in the office. I am going to declare a vacancy in the office of corporate counsel. And then I'm going to declare a vacancy in the office of police chief.
Point of order.
So I'm at the same time going to appoint as interim police chief, our current police chief. I think he's doing a great job and as I told him when I met with him, I just, I want to do my due diligence. And so we're gonna have a meeting this week, but I am appointing our current police chief to continue in his role, but as interim in view of affirming his, his contract. For the city administrator position, I'm appointing Jim Messina, our current assistant city administrator, to be our interim city administrator. And I am appointing Jeff Jacobson to be our interim corporate counsel. And so I'm going to ask those people to please come pick their places. And so I'm going to ask those people to please come pick their places.
This is not how the city council is run. City council votes and hires and replaces employees. Unfortunately, the mayor, mayor may not, the new mayor may, may not know this, and so us current city aldermen, the city administrator, and the city attorney are still valid.
Thank you.
Yeah, for removing or putting somebody back in a position, you need the concurrence of the city council to do that, and I don't think you have that.
I, I agree with you, Alderman Smith, if I was removing anyone from their positions, then I would require counsel, I would do that with the advice and consent of the counsel. But this is, this is not that. And the difference is that by state statute, as well as by the West Chicago Code of ordinances, these three positions, and no later than the end of the previous administration. And so those contracts are up as soon as I'm sworn in. And that's why I am able to declare a vacancy. I am not removing them from their position. I am not revoking their contract. Their contract was void the moment that I took office. And so I, I do hear you, and I do, I do, I will say that I really wanted to meet with all of you, and that's why I made such an effort to to reach out to you and to each and every one of you at least three times I, I, I asked to meet. Because I wanted, I didn't want to have to do this as a surprise, but I do feel that I am bound and responsible to the people who voted me into office. The duties of my position as the chief executive officer of West Chicago. And that is my position. And for me to, for me to fail to act in that capacity would be to let down the people who voted and voted quite clearly that they wanted to change. So I am very appreciative of Mr. Gavins' twenty-seven years of service to our city. And yet it is part of our democratic system that when a new administration comes in, they are allowed to bring their own officials. And that was, that is done with the consent. That is done with the advice and consent of the aldermen, which is why, which is why I am, I am beginning a search where there's an administrator in which I am inviting all of you to begin communicating with me so that we can get together and choose that person. And I am inviting all of you to respond to my phone calls and my emails and meet with me so that we can find the right person to be the permanent corporate counsel of West Chicago. I would also greatly value all of your input in determining whether to continue the contract for our current police chief, which I am wanting to do. But I cannot work with you if you will not return my phone calls. Alderman Demas.
I would just like clarification from our current city attorney about all of what you have stated.
Okay, Mr. Jacobson.
So the law is quite clear. The law clearly states that those offices that be replaced last only as long as the current mayor is in office. So when the administrator's contract was enacted, the law specifically states that the moment there's a new mayor, that's when that contract ends. Can't be more than four years, but can never be longer than the mayor's period of time. So the mayor, the current mayor now, has the right to appoint someone because none of those positions, the three that he mentioned, have lasted past the moment he was sworn in. The law and the spirit of it is, so a new mayor, a new administration can pick who they want. That's the point behind it, and that's clearly the law.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Mr. Bond to also give his opinion because I respect the fact that many of you believe that he is still the city attorney. But I am also going to pass out two legal opinions to all of you and, and submit these to the record also that, that explains some of the legal side of things.
A couple of things. First of all, the offices do not automatically become vacant upon the expiration of time to the extent that that's the, what Mr. Jacobson indicated. The court in the City of Lincoln versus Industrial Commission specifically made that finding. The city code is very clear in both the instance of the mayor. Power section two dash forty-one, two says the mayor has the power to appoint and remove with the advice and consent of the council, the city administrator, the police chief, and corporation councils. It is contemplated, as was in the principle of democracy, that the mayor's sort of ticket is set forth as he means that that was a democratic method of doing it. Not to say that the mayor is handcuffed in submitting those people he believes are best suited for that position, but there's two things. One, the city administrator's contract is valid. The the city of West Chicago is a home rule community. It was determined to be a home rule community in July nineteenth, two thousand and four. It adopted an ordinance recognizing and declaring West Chicago as a home rule unit based on the certification that occurred in that March of that year. This council, when they approved Mr. Gavins' contract, specifically authorized the use of that home rule power. Supreme Court has consistently held that any ordinance or resolution enacted by a home rule unit of government of Illinois Constitution supersedes any conflicting statute. And in connection with that, the, the, the law does not provide that there is currently a vacancy in the office of the city administrator. There is no authority under the city code with respect to that. Similarly, the office of corporation counsel and the office of police chief follow that same rationale. Under the Illinois law and under the West Chicago code, the mayor does not have temporary appointment power. He only has that if an appointed municipal officer ceases to perform the duties or hold office by reason of death, permanent physical or mental disability, conviction of a disqualifying crime, or dismissal or abandonment from office. None of those individuals who were appointed have abandoned that office, nor have they been dismissed because they cannot be dismissed without the advice and consent of the city council. That's the, again, the bedrock of democracy is the majority rule. So that these matters are, I mean, the mayor doesn't have the authority to unilaterally remove an item from an agenda. It's been placed there, properly placed there, nor does the mayor have the authority to temporarily appoint people to positions without following the specific requirements of the West Chicago City Code consistent with state statute.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. While I respect Mr. Bond's opinion, I am going to ask Mr. Jacobson to take Mr. Bond's place at this point. And I am going to ask Mr. Messino to take Mr. Gavins' place at this point.
Point of order. Yes, I would like us to actually continue with our current item nine and continue with our city business, as it has already been pointed out by our current attorney of the legal planning. And the current contracts have not been nullified. Even though you are placing a new person, excite you as backup to items that we cannot discuss at this point of vengeful lies that have been spread throughout this city.
Number ten, city council meeting minutes of April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Are there any changes or amendments to the minutes? Okay, there are no changes. We will approve the city council meeting minutes. According to the rule orders, it is. So the city council meeting minutes are approved. It does not need to be a motion on approving the meeting minutes. Number eleven, corporate disbursement report. Number eleven, the corporate disbursement reports. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Messino, would you please call the roll?
At this point, it is not clear that I have actually supported the council to take that role, and therefore I don't believe that I can really.
Understood. I'll, I'll call the roll. Alderman.
So waiting for item nine, what they called, under business.
That's not what we are looking at right now. The corporate disbursement report has been, a motion has been made in a second. There may have been some confusion because you, Mr. Brown, said I make a motion when I had asked for one on the corporate disbursement report, but you might have been motioning to something else. So is there a motion for the, to approve the corporate disbursement report? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
So, Mr. Jacobson. Alderman. Hi, Renee, on the corporate disbursement report. Alderman of Minnesota.
Hi.
Alderman meeting.
Hi.
Alderman of Cantargass, State of Alderman Brown.
Abstain.
Alderman Jim.
Abstain.
Alderman Helen.
Hey.
Alderman Currie of Nios. Alderman Deas.
Abstain.
Alderman Virch Ferguson. Alderman Smith.
Abstain.
Alderman Switen.
Abstain.
Alderman Stamm. Alderman Rayon. Okay.
Alderman.
Yeah, she said I, yeah, so five, five eyes. That cares. Mr. Gavins informed me that the extensions go with the eyes, and so that cares. So I want to just close with a couple of things. This is obviously a rough transition. Get that? And I respect your opinions that this is not the way that things have been done. And I respect Mr. Bond's opinion that it is not legal. But I have done my due diligence. I've read the code, municipal code, state statutes. I've consulted with many attorneys. And this is legal. This is how our system works. An attempt to pass a contract for a city administrator or for the chief of police or for the corporate counsel that extends past the, that extends past the, the end of the previous mayor's administration is an illegal contract. And so the four-months' notice clause in the current administrator's contract was not an illegal, was not a legal clause which renders that contract void. And I'm going to ask Mr. Jacobson once more if you can spell out for us the difference between removing an administrator and what we have here, which is the contract which is ended at the end of the previous mayor's term.
Mayor, I think you've actually done it correctly. So that's the statute. In administration, it's not allowed to, according to the Illinois Supreme Court, the burden of an ex-administrator administration, the mayor, with those three positions, all the other important contracts can last longer than the mayor's just those three positions, but you are correct.
Was there another item where you felt like I was doing things that were illegal?
Point of order.
Yes, maybe.
Although I do agree with state law, any of the city ordinance does not allow contracts to extend beyond the current mayor's term. I do not see anything in the code that allows you to appoint anybody to those positions if you are to remove them. So to Tia's point, at this point, we have no city administrator. We have potentially no police chief because you've removed him from office. And we potentially have no city attorney because you cannot make appointments unilaterally.
You have interim police chief, corporate counsel, and we do have an interim city administrator who will continue to carry out their duties as, as, as they have. And in response to the statement that I don't have the, this, I want to address what you said. So hold up a point of order, please. In response to the question whether the mayor has the power to appoint, to appoint a, an interim. You're correct. Our, our municipal code does not speak to that. And so we have to go to our state code. And in one of the letters that I gave you, it points out, under Illinois sixty-five ILCS five slash three dot one dash ten dash five zero, the procedures for filling a vacancy for an office are delineated. The corporate authority, the mayor, can determine whether a vacancy exists in any The corporate authority, the mayor, can determine whether a vacancy exists in any unit of the local government. This includes elected city officials, appointed commission members, and city officers such as the city administrator, chief of police, and the city's corporate counsel. If there is or could be a vacancy due to the passage of time, contract date, the mayor may declare the position vacant. This duty coincides with sixty five ILCS five slash thirty one dash thirty five dash ten, which states that the mayor may remove any official appointed by the by the mayor. However, the mayor must report the reason for the removal to the city council. Therefore, in conformity with sixty five ILCS five six four seven two, the mayor may appoint and remove all the administration assistants and officers.
Oh, can you clarify what the reason for removal was? That should be just read.
Yes, that their contract was on.
But it is a removal.
No, it is not a removal. The which would happen if under Illinois statute and under our West Chicago city code as of twenty minutes ago, thirty minutes ago, when I was sworn in, we did not have a we did not have a contract with those three individuals. And I understand that the contracts do allow them to continue to serve if the if the if the city deems that desirable, but the the declaration of a vacancy is not the same as a removal. And that is why it does not require council approval. Because what I need you guys' advice on and what I need your consent on is appointing a permanent person for that role. And that is what I am asking you is to to meet with me, which the more majority of you have been unwilling to do. And so you made
Let's take a vote now.
No. And so you made an attempt to make an end run around the statutory authority of the mayor by putting in 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 the city administrator's contract a clause that said that he had to be notified four months before any non-renewal of his contract. And we all know that four months ago was January, and I wasn't the mayor then. And so it does handcuff the mayor by creating a contract which extends past the inception of the new administration. And so that is the legal thing. That was an illegal contract, which is now voided. And so I am going to be very willing to meet with all of you, as I have been, and I hope you will now be willing to meet with me. And I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn for these good citizens of West Chicago to enjoy the rest of the festival.
Call the vote, item nine.
Item nine, motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, do we have a second? Nine has been dealt with. Do we have a second to adjourn?
Item nine is on the board.
Call the vote, item nine.
Item nine.
We have a second to adjourn. Will you get them? Okay.
Motion to move for executive session right now.
A second.
I don't have the floor. I don't want to make this into executive session today. I think that all the good people that are here deserve to know where it's at. Mr. Myers.
Aye.
Alderman Brown. Sorry, Alderman of Cantar Gashia. Alderman BD. Alderman Brown. Alderman Jim.
No.
Alderman Helen.
No.
Alderman Curry from Nios.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
No.
Alderman George Ferguson. Alderman Smith.
No.
Alderman Spider.
No.
Alderman Stamm. Alderman Alino Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Breno.
No.
The that fails? Okay, so we we need specific language to go into an executive session saying under what under what code we are going into an executive session. And it's not on the agenda. So we actually can't pull down that. So another motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Okay, all in favor, aye? All in favor? Motion carried. I heard I heard two, I heard two nays. Let's do it again.
Aye.
Oh, my fault, sorry. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
That fails. That was very clear. Thank you. That was a mistake. All right, so I do have some prepared remarks. So many of many of us organizations or clubs, maybe teams to find that community and camaraderie that we are looking for. And many of you are probably part of a some sort of religious organization, a church. I see a lot of people from the mosque here where they find that community. As a municipality, we don't choose to be part of it, like our family. We are put into that municipality. We may choose to move here, but we don't choose who our neighbors are. And so in a sense, like that train that I described earlier, we're kind of stuck with each other. And if you have somebody who is you know, coughing or snoring loudly all through the night on a train, that can be a frustrating experience. But as a city of West Chicago, we have been we have been put together as a community. And it is those democratic processes that are what do unite us. We may disagree, like we do right here, about the about our reading of that of that law, specifically about whether the mayor has the ability to declare a vacancy. But I respect all of you in your opinions that you are sincere in your belief on that. And I trust that you also respect my sincerity and my diligence in spending many, many hours speaking with multiple different attorneys. So I didn't go into it lightly or without thought. But there's times, like we said, when we feel like the system is broken. And this might be for some of us, one of those times. But I don't I don't think that it is broken. We have a little bit of a stalemate here because I'd like to end the meeting and 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 let me just ask a question here. A lot of you were wanting to go to to item nine, which was
Should we vote on item nine?
A lot of, no, I still have the floor. I still have the floor. A lot of you were obviously pushing for that. And so I I, what I understand from that is that you do want to reappoint Mr. Gutman as your city administrator with a contract that would end in twenty nineteen. And that would clearly not involve my role as a mayor and appointing the city administrator. Let me get my copy of the municipal code here. This is volume one. Got some time in it? No, it's a lengthy document, about eighteen hundred pages. But I just need you the the bottom line here. The bottom line is that what you are trying to do is take away the statutory authority of the mayor. And that is illegal. And I feel completely convinced that I am accountable to these and the other rest of our twenty six thousand residents to ensure that we follow the city code. And so let me read you the the section that to me is kind of the one of the at the base of what we're talking about here. This is division two forty one, powers and duties of the mayor. The mayor is the chief executive officer of the city. The mayor shall have all the powers and performance prescribed by law, the code, and ordinances of the city by established custom, and shall take care that all laws and ordinances are faithfully executed. It shall be the mayor's duty to attend and preside at all regular meetings, committees, and the whole special meetings of the council. And let me just repeat that last part of, because that that one kind of is skim over. The mayor shall take care that all laws and ordinances are faithfully executed. And that is my job to ensure that all laws and ordinances are faithfully executed. And that's what I'm trying to do here. To appoint and remove, with advice and consent of the council, the city administrator, the chief of police, and the corporation counsel. And so what you guys are trying to do is to divest me from that process. I don't see any other way around it. You're trying to vote on that with a person that I have not appointed. And you did that by approving a contract which was illegal. And so let me go on here. To appoint outstanding and special committees of the council and make all appointments with the advice and consent of the council to the various boards and commissions of the city as required by law, this code, or otherwise, to serve as the city's official spokesperson and represent the city before governmental agencies, private, public organizations, citizens groups, and the media. And I could go on, but I'll stop there. But that is that is crystal clear that it is my role to appoint with the advice and consent of the council, the city administrator, the chief of police, and the corporation counsel. And I will not let you take that right away from the office of mayor. So I will not entertain a motion on number nine. Just letting you know. Is there anything else that you would, or on, I I I will not entertain a motion on either number eight or number nine. Is there anything else that anyone would like to make a motion? Or I can talk a bit more.
While I disagree with what you've done here with city attorney, city administrator, et cetera, I disagree with that. But would you agree that for any
sorry, I I can talk rather than people.
Would you agree then that for any future appointment you make, you need the advice and consent of the council?
I need the advice and consent of the council to hire a permanent city administrator, and I want, I want the advice. I want your advice and consent. Here, I just send that back unless you have more for your question.
You got the gist of my question.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. So yes, I agree. To appoint a permanent city administrator, chief of police, and corporate counsel, I need and I want your advice and your consent. So what we are talking about here is keeping the city going while we're in that process. And I have very confidence. One of the things that has been said many times about our staff is that we have a great team of people on the staff. And I have full confidence in Ms. Messina that she will be able to keep the keep the ship headed in the right course and right direction while we work through our next city administrator. I don't want to do that without you. I want to do it with you, which is why I was calling. And again, you guys were refusing to respond to me, which is why I had to do it this way. Because I will not consent to an end run that strips my statutory authority as a mayor. And so I fully agree with you that I do need, I I don't run the city by myself. The only reason the state code allows for a corporate authority to appoint interims is so that, you know, the ship doesn't go down like in a transition period. This is the transition period in a but yes, I fully commit to getting your advice and your consent on appointing a permanent person. Yes.
I guess I'm unclear because we have two opposing attorneys stating two different things. So I really cannot go appropriately or inappropriately because we still have two opposing opinions.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Thank you. You might say that again, because that's
Here's where my confusion is. Here's where my confusion is. We have two attorneys that are in opposition with what you're trying to say is. Your attorney's saying is fact. And the current attorney for the city is saying is not fact. So. I cannot vote one way or another on anything until I have a clear understanding. And so. What you're doing, from what I understand, from our current city attorney is illegal. From your appointed attorney would be legal. So where do we find a middle name that could give us that thing? So that's, I, I understand that. When I was talking to local attorneys, there were points at which they disagreed, which any of us. For attorneys know that they often will present different points of view. But I do have a third voice here, which is, um, uh, Mr. Kaneko. Uh, there's a attorney who was formerly, uh. A, an administrative adjudicator for the city of West Chicago. Um, and he is applying here. That, um, Mr. Jacobson's interpretation is correct. Um, so for whatever that's worth. Uh, but I mean, at the, at the end of the day. You know, I'm not asking you to vote on anything. I have the statutory authority to appoint a. Uh, a temporary interim person to fill those roles. And, um, where, where we will. Need to get together and, and communicate and vote is in, is in, uh. Affirming a, a person to fill that position on a permanent basis. So I, I, I very much, again. Uh, want to express my willingness to meet with you guys. And, um, I hope that. You will be willing to meet and talk with me. And I don't know that yet.
People opinion from both attorneys present. On how long interim does this, does this type make staying in office without the consent of the council? If it's an extended period of time, I fail to see how that doesn't disturb the power of the council as stated ordinance and stay wrong. Now, you can defend your case.
Yes, and I, I think that's a, that's a fair question because I, I do also agree that. You know, someone could bring someone in as an intern and then just keep them. And the courts have moved on that before. You can't do that.
Right, so you, you can't make a temporary person the four-year. Um, I'm not aware of any case that subsports this certain time, um, for the temporary rooms.
Yeah, it's my opinion, uh, based on the Illinois municipal code sixty-five, I L C S. By section three point one dash thirty dash five. The mayor only has the power of a temporary appointment if an appointed municipal officer ceases to perform the duties or hold the office.
Mr. Bond, please answer the question specifically.
So my, my answer to that is there is no authority under Illinois law. For there to be an interim appointment. It is a collaborative after this part of the democracy.
That is not what the question was. The question, let me.
Um, the question was, can we get a legal opinion on what constitutes interim? And if there is a limit to what interim would be. You've already expressed your opinion on the other item. And so please don't repeat it, but please answer the question for Mr. V.
Oh, with all due respect, Mayor, that is the answer. There is no provision in the, uh, Illinois municipal code. Nor is there any provision in the city of West Chicago code that would provide any temporary authority for appointment. Well, they're a question maker.
So, uh, your, your, your opinion has been duly noted and. I don't want this just to be a back and forth arguing. We, we understand that there are two. There are two excellent lawyers here who have two different opinions. And just going back and forth on that, uh, tonight is not, is not going to be helpful. So I'm not gonna have you continue to, to give that opinion over and over again. So. Is the only thing that you guys are willing to bring a motion on item nine? Because I will not bring that one. I will talk all night. Actually, no, we have to end at nine thirty. But that's, that's, that is. Part of our code. Yes.
And the question is, is there any motion that you would be willing to look at other than number nine? Is there anything that you want to motion other than?
We do also have number eight that we can discuss as well as the fact and. All of the elected officials up here have been elected by the people as well as yourself. And you are this vote. Based off of what the council agrees upon.
Oh, that I'm the tie-breaking vote.
Correct. You are the tiebreaker.
Yes, uh, I do agree with that, Alderman Brown, that I am, uh, I do not vote accept as a tiebreaker. And my primary role, uh, as stated here in our city code is to preside. Uh, at the regular meetings. And so presiding is, um, is what I am doing. So we can't bring, other than a motion to adjourn. We can't bring another motion that is not on the agenda. And I won't entertain a motion, um, to go back to the ones that I've already pulled off. So, um, if, if you guys want to discuss something, we could do that. Um, but I would encourage you to look around at the people behind you and realize that they are. Hungry and wanting to go home and, um. They can go. True, but they care about what's going on. So, uh, let's, let's keep it, keep it simple, everybody. Remember, remember, this is. This is, um, our democratic process and we may not agree, but we're gonna keep it simple. So please. I've asked someone at the table here to keep it civil and I've asked someone out there to keep it simple. So. Uh, we want it, we want that to work both ways. These are your duly elected representatives. And, you know, sometimes if you feel like the system is broken. You know, democracy is not a spectator sport. Get involved. You see what's going on here. Um, and I don't mean just get involved once every four years by voting. If you feel strongly that, um, the people that I or anyone up here is not representing you well. Then get involved in, in the system. Vote. Help the candidate to get out the vote, join a commission. Um, volunteer in some way and be part of the change. So, um, I really appreciate all of you being here. I just want to speak to the. Uh, to the public for a second. Um, I appreciate that you. That you care about what's going on in our city. And I think that one thing we can all agree on. Um, I, I'm guessing that we can all agree on the fact that, um. We had, uh, much improved voter turnout this election. And to me, that is a win in everybody's book. Whether, whether I'm on the winning side or the losing side. This time I was on the winning side. Next time I might be on the losing side. And same is true for all of you. But the fact that we have so many people here that can hear about what is going on. Is a testament to the fact that this community is not apathetic. And that is one of the greater dangers to our democracy these days. We'll always have evil. In this world, but it's when good people become apathetic. That we see some of our worst, um, situations throughout history. So thank you for being here. And this is not a typical city council meeting. Um, it's a rough transition from one administration to the next. And, um, I hope that you don't go away turned off by this. But respecting the fact that all of these people. Who like raised their voices and said, no, no, when I was moving through the things, that was because they care about this community. And they are volunteering their time to be here, not just once a year, but twice a month. And then all of the other things that they're called on to do. And so. The fact that they got a little bit riled up when I moved things through in the way that I believe is legal. I respect that because you guys care. And I think that's another thing we all agree on, is that every one of us here really cares about this community. And wants to see it. I'll go back to my three things, a better place for our kids. And. You know, uh, we're at a little bit of an impasse here. I get that. And we have an hour or more that we can do this. Otherwise, by municipal code, we end at nine thirty. We can double check that number. Oh, ten thirty. We got two more hours, everybody. Hey. But I, I think that's. Let me just say this. By voting to adjourn, you are not voting to agree with me. Uh, you know, I'm not asking you to vote and agree that what I'm doing is right. Uh, I believe with all my heart that it is, that it is, though, um. By the letter and the spirit of the law, um. What is my responsibility? By voting to adjourn, you're not saying that you agree with me on that. Yes. Alderman, I mean, a sort of.
Your presence even in one of the chairs or in the public. I believe that we are not here as Mayor Daniel said, for the youth of the community. If you believe that what you are doing is for the community, for, uh, not just yourself, for, for the community. I feel that we should, uh, ask all of us on the table. Why do we think that? Either keeping or removing or making an interim. For any of the different positions that want to be. Depaired. We should have a reason on why we think that is a, a, a good thing or not. So I would like to talk to the people that is, they're. Challenging mayor's decision to adjourn a new person for the position. Like, what is your reason behind? I, I feel the borders to get to know that you, if you think of this.
Um, I think that's a fair question. If, uh, if one of you would like to, uh, give some explanation of. Why you, um, believe that. The council should vote on the city administrator position without any input from me. I, I would like to hear that rationale because I am not trying to do anything without you. I am trying to prevent you from doing something without me. I want to do it together. And if you can present a coherent argument for why. Why the council should push through the city administrator's contract without any input from the mayor. Whose role is to appoint the city administrator. I would like to hear that. Is that fair?
I think we all have a different, I have a different question.
Okay, but I'll, I'll come to it in just a second. But is there anybody that, that can give that point of view? I mean, not just trying to force me to do something that I don't want to do, but tell me why you think it should be your right. To make that decision without me.
I don't think anyone here is trying to deny you the right you have as mayor. Based upon ordinance to make appointments to decisions of city administrators, city council, and chief of police. I think what I am questioning, I'm not gonna speak for anyone else. Is how can we do this in a way that doesn't harm the city, doesn't harm the way the city functions? How we can pass the knowledge of people who've been doing this for years, decades, twenty-seven years. On to whoever takes those positions in the future, to whoever you want to choose to appoint and we consent to that appointment. I feel that the attempt to use the contracts. Which you clearly have the, the right of the state law and the city law, as far as I'm concerned. I'm not, I'm not an attorney and that, I do appreciate your opinion. But I can read ordinance as much as anybody else can. And it does appear fairly clear in my mind. That they cannot extend beyond the term of the current mayor or greater, or greater four years. What? I think it, it feels to me that it's an end run around the council's authority. Upon removal of those same offices. The law is pretty clear that removal requires the consent and advising consent of the council as well. And it feels that you're making an end run around that portion of the law. I know you're talking a fine legal point that there's a contract and, and the removal of, of an employee. An appointee, I should probably say. Sorry, I work in business, my business serving employees, appointees. And I don't know what anybody else here feels around the council table, but I feel that you are not working with the council. In good faith at this point in time. And I think that's the vibe I'm getting to a lot of folks up here. I would like to suggest, although I cannot make you. That you would consider delaying your decisions until the next meeting. Get items on the agenda and let this go through the rational manner.
Yeah, let me take it back and then I'll, then I'll send it to you.
Back and forth. That's kind of how councils work. You take up a lot of, of others and go back and forth. So if I, I mean, one of the points that you made, I, I do think I hear you saying that you agree that. It was not right to. Take me out of the decision-making process with the city administrator's contract. Is that, is that fair?
You should have a say.
I should have a say, okay. So, um, when I was elected. Um, election night, let's go back a little bit. I didn't get a, I didn't get a customary call, um, congratulating me. I started reaching out. I reached out to our former mayor. There, Dana, I reached out to all of you on the council. Um, in good faith. trying to sit down and talk with you. And some of you did, I, I appreciate the fact that Alderman, you be all of us out, you guys sat down and I felt like we had a good starting discussion about things, even maybe it doesn't mean we agreed on everything, but we're having normal professional conversation. The rest of you just refused to engage with me. And so, it rings a little hollow for me to hear now that you feel like I'm not engaging in good faith with you guys. Given some priority in terms of just meetings, callbacks, things like that. I mean, I would, I think where people who callback or respond to a colleague, that is not acceptable, and especially if that person is someone that you are responsible to in some way. And you guys are responsible, not to me, you guys are responsible to your voters. So, I mean, maybe we have some starting point here, Alderman, maybe, in that, like, I agree that I need you guys, you agree that you need me. And so, together, we could actually work through things. Now, what I am asking is that you do respect my wishes, which is customary in any municipality, that a mayor can bring his own people to help change the course of his administration, the, the people as, as, as is outlined by municipal code. And that's three key people for me. You guys, as you pointed out, are the ones that vote, not me. This is one of the powers of mayor. And those checks and balances, which I feel like have been, have been missing. But there is, there is no reason. And so, and so, you know, there is no statutory, there is no municipal code, state law that does give you guys the right to ignore my wishes on the city administrator. And, and, and so, with all due respect, Michael has run our city for a very long time. But he's not the person that I am choosing to help usher in my new administration. It's, I'm not getting any applause, it's just, it's just, those are decisions that we make, whether we're business people or, or, I mean, it's my role to usher in what I believe is a clear mandate from the public in this last vote, changes. And so, with all due respect to Mr. Gutman, I also have lots of respect for Liz Lucino. And I don't think things are going to fall apart if she's running it for a time. So, as, as the chief executive officer of West Chicago, it seems reasonable to me that that I should be able to say, "Okay, I'm going a different direction." And yes, I want your advice and your consent, need your advice and your consent. But we are going to go a different direction as far as, as far as those, those roles that I've mentioned. So, Mr. Smith?
See if this thing works, yeah, try it, it work? A question I have is, because there's obviously a feeling that the way things have gone here might not meet legality. And so, if that's the case, and we have two attorneys here, is there a method, and I guess you have to direct it over to the two attorneys, because you're not an attorney and neither am I, is that is there another higher power decision to go to, to be adjudicated? Because I don't think it's going to get adjudicated very well here. That's my question. I have been through four mayors in four different transitions, going back to nineteen ninety-one, and I've never seen anything like this. I'm just saying, I don't get a good sense that things have been done right here tonight. And that's why if there's a, if there is a way to get this looked at by somebody totally objective in, I don't know, a court, maybe it takes a court, I don't know. But if there is, I'd be curious is, is how that would happen.
So, ultimately, the answer to that is, it's the people that are ultimately, that we are ultimately responsible to. And yes, the, the courts are a remedy if someone feels like something has been done wrong. But I, I, I respect your opinion, though you are, or if I'm hearing you correct, you're just not sure which, what, what is the correct thing. I'm, I'm, I'm sure, I mean, I'm, I'm, I've been researching this for quite some time, and so, you know, I, I am not asking you guys to agree with me. And the courts are certainly a way in which my opinion on this could be overturned. I mean, I think we all kind of hope it doesn't go down that direction, because it'd be expense to the city and all that. But, but it's, it's because I feel compelled by the twenty-two hundred conversations with families that I have in West Chicago, that they wanted me to bring change and to use all of my legal powers to do that, that I am. And I also agree with you that this is not a great way to do this. I only did it this way because I couldn't get you guys to meet with me.
Yeah, so, you know, you asked me to meet with you, I couldn't, I have a very, my life was going crazy. So, I couldn't meet with you. However, I also was under the impression that I wasn't sure you were going to be mayor. So, due to that reason, is another reason I feel some of these other aldermen may not have met with you because of our, because of the state law that required you to pay your fines, that you owed the city first. So, I would say that that was a part of an issue, I think, with some of these aldermen as well, not knowing to meet with you, not knowing whether or not you would become the mayor, because of the state law that is in place prohibiting you from becoming mayor because you owed fines to the city. So, I think that's a very part of the issue. I don't disagree that I believe the mayor should be able to help choose who helps lead the city, but open with the city council's input. So, at least that's what I've heard from both players. You, you need the direction and input from the city council, so that's what I wanted to say.
Permanent or on the temporary?
Well, I'm still not sure, because they're opposing attorneys, and I could pull up probably as many attorneys that would disagree with the attorneys that you pulled up, so that's kind of a point.
I may disagree with you, Alderman Davis, because the current mayor, Vener Bobby, is not the only one who tried to reach out to you. I also tried to reach out to you, and none of you responded to my emails or phone calls. Not my own problems, it's not my fault, I'm sorry, I mean, it's part of the, it's part maybe. But you guys are not responding to your voters, up to you older aldermen or mayor. I don't think it's a problem. We are all in the same chair, we all have the same kind of power. Yes, your knowledge is really important, and you have you here for a long time. What are you guys going to teach, the new generation, so the new people, the ways to do it? I don't think it's going to be a fair transition.
Exercise here tonight, like, I, you know, I, I felt the frustration and anger that you guys were expressing when we were going through the agenda. And that's the frustration and anger that I was hearing over and over from the citizens that we talked to. So, in a sense in which it was the voters, this election, do you agree with these new incoming people who are saying we need change and the city is not listening to us? With these new voters who are saying city hall is not helpful, it's not friendly? With these new incoming people who are saying that we need to change what we're doing? You know, hard reset on developing our downtown? Or conversely, do you agree with the former mayor and and all the other, you aldermen who endorsed him? That we just needed to keep the momentum going? And that what we were doing was, was good, we did not want change, we, we just wanted to keep, keep the momentum going? And I do believe that the voters spoke very clearly that they don't want that.
Thank you, Bobby. While I do disagree with the citizens that remain tonight, I also believe that I have certain contractual and statutory rights that I have to explore, we're not going to solve that tonight. I may, we suggest love to, and from my perspective, I don't get a vote. Go to adjourn, go lock this up another time, another place. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second? I saw Alderman Carrick, you know, put up their hand in the board. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It was called a roll. Alderman, how concert Garcia? Alderman Cora Minas? Alderman Myers?
Aye.
Alderman Loyal? Alderman Vino Soto?
Aye.
Alderman Stan? Alderman Switer?
No.
Alderman Smith?
No.
Alderman Berger Braxton? Alderman Venus?
No.
Alderman Howard?
Sheen.
No.
Alderman Brown?
Aye.
Count on that? But just give me the count if you would, please.
Five yeses.
Five yeses and nine noes.
So, I still would love to hear a rationale for those of you who are, who are voting no, but it's not adjourned, I, 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 what I'm assuming is that you just feel like voting no is kind of your opportunity to just express that you, that you don't approve, because I didn't give you an opportunity to vote that on the other items. But it's not really that, it's just, I think, it's just voting to adjourn. But if we are going to be here, I, I still would like to hear some coherent argument for why, I mean, the only reason we're here is that you guys are trying to push through item number nine, which is the administrator's contract.
Discuss some of what we've dealt with, you know, you're very assigned now that you're making.
I, well, I, I'd like that if someone would be willing to answer that question specifically, just to give a, just a coherent response for why you feel that it is right to push through number nine, though it is clearly against my wishes as the new mayor. And, and which I think at least a lot of us agree that, I think it's very clear from city code, that that is my role to appoint with the advice and consent. So, yes, no?
So, I just wanted to address, every single year, the, since I was appointed, I mean, I attended meetings prior to being appointed, I needed to make sure that this was a position that I felt I could help out with. This is not a job for the money, this is a job specifically as volunteer work. And I want everyone to know that we as aldermen, this is not a full name job, this is volunteer work. One of the things that we do every single year annually is we go around to every single alderman and we take a survey on how we feel the city administrator has done. From that survey, it is then decided upon by us, not by the city administrator, not by anyone else, whether we decide to keep him on with a contract, or if we feel he's done poorly. What can he do better? We make recommendations, we speak with one another about that situation. Ever since I began, it is, we have not, I have never heard one bad comment over the years of his job as our city administrator. Specifically, when it comes to when we have questions that we're not sure who to reach out to. We don't always have the luxury of going straight to an attorney. We actually reach out to Michael Gutman, and I know many of you have, if you have questions for constituents. I don't just serve word two. I also serve other people that call me as well, all around the city of West Chicago. I don't just pawn them off on someone else. I will make sure that I represent the people in the city of West Chicago, and that's what I've done. And Michael has always been in my back corner, making sure that I have the most knowledge and information going forward, so I can respond back to the constituents to the best of my ability.
We'll go to Matt in just a second, but I'll just respond one thing to that. I chose to change administrators because the voters clearly wanted a different direction. And so, I appreciate your, your opinion, Mr. Gutman, and hopefully we will all have adequate opportunity to express our gratitude towards him. But I think we all know that in, in, in government, it's pretty common practice that when you have a new executive come in, they bring their own administration as they are allowed by the right of code and and our municipal code and state code. And I just wanna read, and then it'll go to you, Matt, but I just wanna read the, so everybody can hear, the section on the city administrator that we're talking about. It says, the there is hereby created the office of city administrator. The city administrator shall be appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of the city council. The appointment shall be by written contract for a period not exceeding four years and which must terminate no later than the end of the then presiding mayor. And that is also repeated in our state code, maybe Jeff, could you pull up some of that state code that we can? It's in the memo. But that is, that's kind of the that's kind of the issue here is, is the the executive officer's ability and right to appoint someone for his administration. State law that addresses that is
is sixty five I O S five slash eight dash one dash seven. And it says, paragraph B specifically states, no contract for employment of a municipal manager among other employment contracts and not exceeding the term of the mayor who is present holding office at the time of the contract is executed.
And so it's 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 in both the state and the city code, and I mean, yes, we're a home rule, but that doesn't mean that we can violate state law, we can make things more you know, more stringent or whatever, but I mean, here, it it's crystal clear in both in both state law and and in our city code. Matt?
So while I don't doubt that Mr. Gutman has done an amazing job for the city and he's received high marks from all the aldermen that were here before. I did not go through that process of of reviewing him, I just got here, like, you know, an hour and a half ago. So I don't have any information to advise and consent over his appointment tonight. I think that the process that we're going through here is very logical in my mind. There was a vacancy, Mr. Bobby appointed a interim city administrator. And if Mr. Gutman would like to apply for the job, it will be open, and then we can give our advice and consent at that time for a new city administrator.
I'm still kind of waiting for the rationale behind voting on this, though the newly elected mayor is explicitly asking me not to. And I will say, like, I mean, it's been brought up, this this is not how this usually goes, and yeah, I get that, and we can throw blame around on on who it is, but that doesn't help us anyway, this is where we're at. But I, you know, I asked, you know, I, Alderman, I I asked you to bump this back originally to the following meeting's agenda because I didn't wanna have to make this decision within an hour of my appointment. But you guys put it on anyways, despite my asking for it to be bumped back. And so we we went with it and you you guys, you know, made that decision and then I made the decisions that I did, but I do wanna point out that I was the one originally that was asking for it to be moved back. And again, I just refuse to abdicate the responsibility that the voting citizens have given me as mayor to set the new course for our city. I I I would love to hear an expression of why you guys feel that it would be right to push through the city administrator's contract, despite clearly understanding that that is against the wishes of the new incoming mayor. Anybody wanna respond to that?
As I'm sitting here listening to everything, I'm trying to decide. First of all, I I just keep going back to what the legality of any of this is. So I would suggest, and this would be a suggestion, that everyone remains in their positions until our next council meeting, when we can all have, hopefully have time to maybe even speak with you and or anyone else that we need to find out to talk to about any of the legality upon which you are facing, I mean, like I said, you can pull up things and we could pull up things and everybody can pull up things. So my, I would ask that we just forego doing anything you would like to do tonight and postpone it until the next council meeting. That's what I would suggest.
Good question, I think it's a really good question, why is the legality of this? Because we have two opinions. And to be fair, and I'm not a lawyer either, I would know, we should try to win side which is. So now that we start asking, playing the question games, you guys are asking current, I don't know, what is the legality of this? Why you guys didn't ask, what was the legality you mayor Vinera, he trying to sell contract back his his contract as mayor?
Question was, why you guys were not asking the legality of the contract before, like for for his contract? When you guys knew they are mayor Vinera was gonna there wasn't a change, what's the name?
But if we do delay this by two weeks and we get four more lawyers to say it's okay and four more lawyers to say it's not okay, like where is that with the city? I mean, we will continue to be questioning this whole thing.
Sorry, Matt, can you say that one more time?
Yeah, I said, if we do, if we do delay this, you know, two weeks, then I I feel like we'll just collect, you know, four more opinions to say this is okay and four more to say it's not okay. And then we're just basically, like, keeping the city in this state of limbo, when again, like I said, as far as I can tell, there's a very logical procedure here. There are the vacancy, there's interims to the administrator, and we'll start the search for a new one.
And I guess the responding to what you're saying, Alderman Davis. To me, the process that was, that led to the council approving the administrator's current contract, and I understand from Mr. Gutman that that clause has been in there since two thousand one, but each council has has approved it, so I mean, it doesn't exonerate you guys of and you're still responsible for good or for bad for that contract. But that that is an illegal contract. And so for me to say I'm gonna allow that to stand, you know, you're saying, hey, I I don't wanna run afoul of the law, so let's just leave it in place. But what was done, and if I acquiesce to that, then I am acquiescing to something that I think is an illegal contract. And so, you know, you're asking me to leave it in place, something that I think is illegal. I as the chief executive officer of the city, believe that I am responsible for chief executive officer of the city, the mayor shall have all the powers and perform all the duties prescribed by the law, including the ordinances of the city, by established custom, this is the part I love to dig into, and shall take care that all laws and ordinances are faithfully executed. And so that's on me if I don't do that.
Where you coming from here? And I do understand with Mr. Soto as well, but one of
Alderman Soto, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Soto.
Well, I can play the same thing.
I don't want anyone to call me by my version of my name, it's okay. But I would like to address the fact that as deep down within my heart, we have two opposing attorneys right now. Personally, I do not want us as a city wasting more money in court for potentially being wrong. It was a lot of money that we just spent and are hopefully done with, I pray. And at this point, I think that's in the back of everyone's mind, that we do not want to end up spending a lot of money in court again, and we would like to get the final decision and make sure that we are correct and accurate with lawyer's decision, either by either your council as well as city council, come to an agreement and make sure that we do not lose out on anything. As aldermen, we we definitely want what's best for the city, we definitely want what's best for our constituents, but we do not wanna waste money if we don't have to. And if we can postpone it for two weeks, Michael can also be helping someone else learn how to do the position. That's something else that you can lift up into requests at that point, instead of just saying, we're just going to get rid of. So that's my thought process right now, and I'm not sure if that helps at all, of how I would be able to agree with extending to the nineteenth, as long as our attorneys are, and we make sure that we can discuss everything and make sure that the legality will not end us in court and protect the city.
Thank you, Alderman Brown. One other thing that I wanted to, and I don't know if you're I'm not sure which thing you're referring to, that the city just spent a lot of money on legally, and I don't know if you wanted to clarify that or not, but going back to something that Alderman Davis said, if you guys is reasoning for not responding to me, was that you were thinking that I was not going to be the mayor? It it rings a little hollow because all of our, all of us as incoming people, Alderman Alucar Tare Garcia, Alderman Carrito Minos, Alderman Adira Soto, and Alderman Myers, and myself, reached out to our counterparts and reached out to the outgoing people, asking them to work with us and talk to us and you know, at the last meeting, we sat and listened to numerous people express the desire, their desire for us as incoming people to be willing to listen. But I never heard one person express that they hoped, desired the outgoing people or that the sitting people would be willing to dialogue with us, and that was the problem, it wasn't our willingness to listen. It was your willingness to dialogue and to engage with us. I think that was very unprofessional. And you know, the fact is my situation is, my my legal situation with the greenhouse is in the appellate court, there's a hearing later this month on a stay of judgment, there is no outstanding debt. But I went ahead and paid it anyways because I knew that there would be an attempt to keep me from being put into office if I didn't. So, yes, I paid the twenty thousand dollars so that that couldn't be a tool that was used against me. I don't feel it was right to force that before I had exhausted my legal remedies, but hey, it was something that made sense for me to go ahead and 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 pay it just to take that away as something that would cause the city to have to go through more turmoil. I know it's ironic, me talking about setting the city to turmoil after this meeting here, this was not my desire. But you know, we've spent a lot on lawyers and attorneys in the last few years, a lot, a lot, and the people don't feel like that money has been used to represent them. And so if what it takes is for me to spend a little bit more money to make sure that the people I represent have a voice, then I'm willing to do that. How about this, something we can agree on, can we agree to like a ten minute break recess? So, motion, a motion to recess until nine twenty four? Can I get a motion? And this, Alderman Davis? In a second?
Aye.
Alderman Dina Soto, all in favor? Opposing? So I think that I think that we're missing two people. If I'm not mistaken, they're coming. So, thing I wanted to point out, lest anyone be in fear, that there was one scenario painted where, you know, we could end up without a chief of police, without a city administrator, without a a corporate council, that's that's not, that doesn't hold water because A, if I am too much of a possibility, you know, if what I did in the earlier part of the meeting was correct, then we have interims. If what I did in the beginning of the meeting was not correct, then we don't have vacancies, they're, I mean, they they go together, so I mean, there's not They're, I mean, they, they go together. So I mean, there's not. Yeah, that was not a concern of mine that we'd end up in the middle because that, that doesn't, that is not a logical possibility. So that's not gonna happen. I, I think that. Let me just state some things I think we agree on. Well, I'm not sure if we agree on this, um. I, I think that we, some of you agree with me. That it is my role to appoint the administrator. With the advice and consent of the council, is that, I mean, just informally, like, do we agree on that part of it? Just looking around the room.
Did you restate that?
Yeah, I would say that, that it is the role of the mayor. By city code, to appoint the city administrator with the advice and consent of the council. Okay. But we agree on that. We need to do this together. Right? The part that we don't dis- that we don't agree on. Is that I have early in the meeting declared these positions to be vacant. Which I believe is, um. Statutory correct, um, according to state law. And that I believe that the mayor statually has the power to. Point, um. To point, uh, interim. Uh, people in those, in those roles. So that. Is the part where we are disagreeing, right? So. I'm still, I've still not heard any expression of. Because this is what, you know, like I'm, you know, having people come to me, hey, can we find compromise? Can we do this? Can we do that? Of course, I want to find a compromise, but, but the thing is, to my, from where I sit. You guys are still trying to push through the contract without me. And I've never heard a response to that. That to me is the logic.
On the city council. Or prepared to come to the city council. I look at the agenda as is. Legally, three days before, on Friday, it's posted, and those are the items that we talk about and discuss. I feel that we didn't get a chance to legally. Discuss and or not discuss, I should say, to vote whether or not. These items were going to be voted on. That is my, that's my, and I don't believe that you had the right. To pull anything on the agenda. Without having to go to a motion.
Um, Alderman Soto, thank you, um, for. Stating that, um, let me, let me say one thing. I think there is some confusion as to. When a motion is needed. We need a motion for anything that requires a vote. Right? So we don't need a motion to have this discussion we're having right now because we're not having a vote. And so the reason that I did not need a motion. Was because it didn't require a vote.
So, uh, to, uh, Alderman Soto's point, um, the agenda was created by the previous mayor. And the previous city council. I was not there. I did not, uh, I wasn't there to put it on the agenda. Um, I did receive the packet that it was on the agenda, um, but neither Mayor Goby or myself were there when the, when the agenda was, or when the agenda item was created. So it seems, like I said before, it seems a little strange that I, I come in today and, and need to vote on, uh, on an item. That, uh, that was put on by a previous, uh, city council.
Do you guys see that? Like how you were forcing the four new people to vote on something that not only. Did they not have had a good chance to think about, but they didn't even have access. They did not have access to the documentation that, uh, or the chance to research or to look into it. That we have as, as, as city council members, but as city council members, we have the ability to look at. City files and so forth that the public doesn't have access to or go to, um, city staff and ask questions and have them research things for us. And so, um, they were being asked to vote on something that. That they did not bring in, and, and also the agenda was forced on me. And I asked for it to be, to be. To be changed. And so. I guess I would kind of put it back on you and say, this says that I reside. At all regular meetings. Is anyone here aware of something that says that? The president cannot pull something off the agenda? Where is that? What?
This is not executive session.
But my question remains. My question remains. Now that I'm the president, I'm the presiding officer of the meeting. That's what I am, the president. I am presiding. The, my question remains, can anyone point to something in Robert's Rule of Order? In city code, in state code, that says that the mayor cannot, the, the residing person of the. Of the meeting, but I meant the president, and not pull something off the, the agenda? Point that out, please. I, I just want to give a second in case anybody is aware of something. That it's a, a different item, Alderman Demus, or is it?
Going back to what was stated.
Okay, let me just go, just, again, I'm, I'm, I'm asking, show me. If I am wrong, show me where. Robert's Rule of Order. City Code, I've been reading through this. It's surprisingly interesting reading. Also helps sometimes if you have a little bit of, uh, trouble sleeping, but the points are very exciting, um. Or state statute, can anybody tell me? Mr. Bond?
No, 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 I didn't know that was going to be an issue, but generally, the, uh, that is not the case. The mayor does not have you no matter.
But show me something specific that says that, that the presiding officer cannot.
I have that for you, just a minute.
Right? Okay, Alderman Demus.
I just was going back to the comment, um, the agenda is public, um, it's posted for the public here. Um, I'm not sure exactly how far in advance, I think it's, what's that, Friday or?
It didn't come out about Saturday, though by code, it was supposed to be out by Thursday or at least on Friday. Yeah, sorry, I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, um, so, and the incoming Alderman, um, should have gotten a copy of it, I would believe. Um, as coming into this meeting tonight, and if they didn't, they could have gone on the website and pulled that up. To see what was on the agenda and then discuss those items prior to this meeting if they had a question. That's all I can say.
Okay, thank you. Alderman, uh, Myers can respond to that, and we'll come back the other way.
Yes, I did, I did receive the agenda as in my email, um, on Saturday. Um, but I don't feel like, you know, three days' time is enough to evaluate a contract for a city administrator. I don't think it's right to, um, the people that voted for me in my ward, uh, to say that I, I can in three days' time. With no city resources or ability to, um, to talk to everybody over the weekend to make that kind of decision.
Sorry, uh, let's, let's do a back and forth, so we'll go Alderman round and then we'll go Alderman central.
So the packet we have in front of us, we have. Let's see, um, the swearing in, some anti-begins news, and one number that we had to look over. There are some meetings that we have, that we have the full budget that you have to look over prior to a meeting. And we are given the exact amount of time that we just had for this packet to look over it. Again, this position is not for the weary, it's for people who are very dedicated. To read through the corporate disbursement or what is every single meeting. To go down line by line by line by line, and be like, wait, why, what's this been waiting us to expose? You know, I'm that type of person. I was a past accountant. This, this is something that I do. I like numbers. But it's just one thing that if we're struggling with just getting through trying to comprehend. One item and not knowing how to address anyone on staff. That's going to be an issue, but now that everyone is elected officials, we will all be able to communicate with everyone. Work well with everyone and make sure that we can help everyone out, and that's what I ultimately want to do with everyone here on council. Moving forward, thank you.
Alderman. Alina Soto.
I'm sorry, I've been elected officials in April first. Cause, uh, as all of us, we won by vote. So in the same way, we get both aims for the position. And we don't, we, if people don't like us enough, for whatever reason, we can get ourselves out. So since April first, none of the communications that we should be having with the new team have been happening.
So, I think I've done, do Alderman correct, but it seems like, um, they want more time to review this. Um, it sounds like same from Mayor Boggs, is that pretty accurate? You weren't given enough time to review this. So, I, I, I mean, if we could table this the next meeting, give you two more weeks to review it, I feel like that would be the compromise. Um, especially with all the people here, kind of pulls out for tonight and moving on to the next meeting. Um, I think that again, that would be a nice compromise. You guys have got some more time and we can call the meeting.
Um, well, we can also, eh, eh, you, you asked if that was a fair summary, that we just needed more time to look at the documents. That, does, does anybody else want to address that before I do? Eh, okay, Alderman Myers, I talked too much.
Yeah, that, that's not the only issue. I think that my, my strong feeling is that, uh, the, the mayor should appoint the city administrator. And they should work together to basically build the, the West Chicago that the voters asked for. And that is the, the most important thing here. The, these other technicalities. That, that's not the main reason that I, I think that we should appoint an interim city administrator. It is, uh, just one of the, the things that go into it. Um, that's it.
Um, so, and I, I think that's further up this too, I, I agree. Um, I think, um, you know, the, the current city council has reviewed a contract that shows that it carries on. Beyond, uh, the term of the mayor, um, as well as, um, our, we've seeked out legal counsel that has confirmed all that, um. Uh, so, I mean, I think that there's, I think that there's.
Don't restate that, just, let me say that one more time, I was trying to follow.
Yeah, um, so it, it's our understanding that, um, the contract would pass through or go beyond, um, the end of term of the mayor, I believe. Um, so with that contract going on, we wanted to offer a, a, an option for the incoming council to be able to vote on that. Um, and I, I guess the, the rub continues to be is what our legal counsel says versus. Your legal counsel is now saying, um, so, uh, again, I, I feel like we're at a stalemate. I, I do feel like the compromise is to move it on to the next meeting. Um, that way we can all have an opportunity to review this further and then we may both uncover some things that might be helpful at the next meeting.
So I didn't hear Mr. Bond saying. Or addressing the question of whether the contract can go past the, um. The, uh, the end of the previous mayor's, um, term. Are you, is that, is that indeed what you are saying?
Yeah, that's not really my opinion, but Alderman, uh, Smith indicated it should go to a higher power, power, higher power is already opined on that. The appellate court has said that it has the proper exercise of home rule authority. Provided to the city of West Chicago pursuant to the constitution of the state of Illinois. Uh, authorizes and renders a contract exceeding limitations set forth in the section cited in, by Mr. Jacobson. Eight, seven, eight dash one, uh, dash seven, he specifically addressed that, and the court said. That that contract was valid and exceeded the limitations that set forth in that section. So yeah, I am saying that that is a, a valid contract. It was a valid contract at the time it was entered into. And it remains a valid contract to this day. There is a provision in there, should the council decide that they want to, uh, remove. The city administrator under that contract. There's a termination provision. There's also a lousy city administrator should, uh, he or she decide to, uh. To end the contract, they have a right to do that with notice, that the council wishes to remove the individual without cause. Uh, there's a division for that, and so all of those are, are included in the contract that was, uh, executed by the comms, by the, uh, council. Uh, pursuant to their home rule authority.
So, yeah, so you do, you are opining that it is legal to have. Extend a contract of the city administrator that goes beyond the term of the mayor. Uh, yeah, if you can just go, yes or no on that one.
I'm not opining it, and I'm re- I'm referring to what the appellate court has opined, and the Supreme Court is consistently opining.
Okay, so yes. Um, okay, uh, so that, that's. That is, uh, a difference of, of opinions, and I'll have Mr. Jacobson, um, uh, respond to that. I mean, it seems pretty clear in both our, um, in both our city code and in, uh, the state. Uh, statutes, um, and. That have already been rattled off. I don't know that it's helpful for any of us to keep rattling them off. Um, but it, it is pretty clear that, uh, the term of the city administrator cannot extend past the term of the mayor. But it, it is pretty clear that, uh, the term of the city administrator cannot extend past the term of the mayor. I'm going to let Mr. Jacobson respond to that.
So I do unfortunately agree that there seems to be a difference in opinion, but there's a case in Illinois. Um, it's the village of Westmont, there's Lenaham, and I can also supply unfortunately tomorrow or maybe in the next hour, the case on home rule. Home rule doesn't apply to these three positions pursuant to statute. There's actually a case, um, where the appellate court talks about, there's also a Supreme Court case um, from years ago and, um, there's been no change on that Supreme Court case. So the Supreme Court hasn't come out and said any difference on a home rule municipality because I looked in that. Unfortunately, I anticipated this tonight based on the agenda, um, the move. And I think you guys also realize the contract, by the fact it was for a long term, ended tonight, which is why you did it on the agenda. Um, that being said, I just want to make one thing clear in case you see it. The law says it changes, um, upon the termination of the current mayor. So, uh, Mayor Boebel didn't win, his contract would have extended. But because the current mayor, um, lost the election, um, his contract expired by the moment, um, Mayor Boebel sat down. Uh, but I can certainly get to the law tomorrow and the cases as applies to home rule and also as it applies to the administrator. The Westmont case, as I pointed out, um, and I'm, I'm assuming none of you really want to read the case law, although it's three pages long and it actually talks about the whole procedure. They go over almost everything related to what, um, this council is fighting over. So it's probably a good story. Um, if you just want a, a quick reading about how the law applies to you. Um, it's the second district. Um, we used to, DuPage used to be in the second district. A few years ago, it's a pretty changed district, so now the third district, but there, and so that applies, um, to us still. So hopefully that helps.
And that is the important distinction there because you, you, some of the things that have been said would be correct if Mayor Banana had won. Then that contract would have continued in force. But because I won, um, the moment that I was sworn in, uh, it was no longer in force. So, um, Alderman Murano, um, go ahead.
Oh yeah, this question is for Cap Bond. What are the legal ramifications if, um, and I apologize, the other attorney's name?
Mr. Jacobson.
Mr. Jacobson, Mr. Jacobson is incorrect and we proceed. What are the legal ramifications to the city? What, what cost all the citizens?
I, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna give before the Mr. Bond because I don't recognize him as the city attorney. And so, uh, I will, uh, from time to time, uh, let him give a counterpoint. So Mr. Jacobson's out of respect for you guys, but I'm not gonna have him, um, giving his, just opining, uh, on, on, on the city business because he is no longer the city attorney in my view. Uh, yes, Alderman stat.
I make a motion to table.
I'm, I'm not entertaining the motion to table.
Oh no, I made the motion.
No, I, I, I didn't entertain it. Um.
Uh, that's, uh, not debatable. There's been a motion and it's been accepted, it's not debatable.
It's not on the agenda.
Doesn't need to be on the agenda.
Okay, so, um, you know, you're kind of playing games with me and we can do this. So that was not a valid motion because you did not state what you were motioning and so I am not recognizing it.
I made the motion to table.
And you did not have the floor. You did not have the floor.
I had the floor when I did it.
You, you made a motion to table and you did not, you did not say what you were doing. And so it was not a valid motion and it is not recognized. And I'm not going to entertain the motion to table.
Not debatable.
If it was a valid motion, that would be true, Alderman's stuff. Uh, yeah, so I mean, if we're playing these games, then I, I'm gonna kind of keep the floor to myself. Bond, we're having a, a, a good start to a discussion here, but like, if I, if I give you guys the floor and then you're trying to, play games to get something nasty, then I'm just kind of keep the floor for a while. So we have, I'm going to ask our, I'm going to ask our, um, interim city attorney to opine on whether that was a valid motion.
So thanks, Mayor. So I don't know what the motion was. I apologize for what I heard. Um, it was just a motion to table.
It was a table issue, but I didn't.
Did not say that. Didn't say that.
Motion to table, item nine.
Oh, I'm not recognizing. Do not have the floor, hold the ground, please raise your hand if you, if you have the floor. So, that it was, um, not stated what the motion that you were table was, it's not a valid motion.
It's a valid motion.
Um, so it's interesting that one of the powers the mayor has is to preside over the meetings and some of you who are, um, interested in politics and so forth, uh, maybe you've seen on C-SPAN or something, if you watch, um, some of these proceedings that, um, it, it happens also on a federal and state level where, um, the person who is presiding over the meeting will sometimes use that power, um, uh, to, uh, not allow certain motions to come. And unfortunately, um, you know, my, my preference is definitely to have conversations and kind of work through, work through things. But when, when people are trying to make an ad run around my statutory authority, I will use my statutory authority to its full extent. And, um, that is, uh, that's, so that's where we're at. I don't feel like some of these things have been coming in good faith. Um, uh, I will recognize Alderman Myers.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All on paper.
Aye.
Aye.
How it goes?
Oh, no.
So I, I would like to point out that as the presiding official over this meeting, the declarations that I made with the vacancies stand. And the appointments of the interim officials also stand. And, um, again, I just come back to the fact that I want to work with you guys. And if you are bound and determined to not work with me, we're gonna have some long nights. But I am fully convinced that I am, uh, accountable to the people who voted us into office. And who spoke quite clearly that they wanted a change. And so ultimately it doesn't come down to the question of whether the aldermen or the city staffers are happy with the city administrator or the direction that the city is going. Because ultimately, the power is given to the people. And there was a very clear, um, there was a very clear dichotomy between those of us who were running on a slate together, who were saying things need to change, people are unhappy. And what the current administration, the pet, the previous mayor and, and the 12 members of, 14 members of, um, the city council who, who all endorsed him were saying mainly that, um, that people were really happy. That people, people were really happy with the direction of the city. And, um, no, we don't need to change. We're just gonna keep the momentum going. And I would like to point out that the voters spoke pretty clearly, um, about that in the five races where the voters had a choice. They overwhelmingly chose those who were saying that we need to change. And for you who are sitting alderman, to refuse to recognize that is telling in terms of your willingness to listen to the people of West Chicago. I haven't heard any of you say yes, apparently the people do want to change or anything like that. I, I've heard you say, oh, these, these, uh, you know, incoming people, they, um, they got all these people upset and mad at us as if we were some kind of mug breakers that were just, you know, um, stirring up trouble. We didn't stir up the trouble. You had the city upset with you. And we gave them an option. So we are extending a hand to you saying, let's work together. That's what we should do. Like my speech, at the end of the day, we come, come, come together, whether we agree with each other or disagree with each other. We come together and work towards the good of the people, but I, I, I I'm sure some of you will. I mean, I can see on your faces that some of you seem like you are really in, and sincerely willing to start work with us, to working with us, but I think some of you don't. Um, or won't. So I want to just remind us what the voters said. I was one today, if anybody's interested. Maybe somebody, Matt, you're, you're better than me at technology. Can you pull up the voting results? And I, 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 I want to read this because, because I want you guys to be faced with the fact that the voters did vote for change. And we are not the enemy here. Okay, yeah.
My question is that in seven of the when you say the majority want to change, there are seven still current aldermen. There are seven over here that were re-elected or elected to their position. So there are two, there's four new aldermen that were voted and a new mayor. That's all I see that the voters wanted as change. They wanted different representation. We never discussed as a voter into none of the conversations I ever had about the chief of police, the city attorney and the city administrator.
Okay, Mr., uh, Alderman, Alvin Soto. I need to know the question. So, then, you may know the, the quote goes, say like the mayor has the power to who, whoever, basically whoever he wants to, or he wants to put on those proceedings. But, uh, and you guys stated, well, the ones that you revealed publicly, that, uh, you guys are happy with the current city administrator, um, the way he has worked with you guys. And I mean, I don't know, I haven't worked with him and I'm running here and, uh, obviously one of the younger aldermen. So the question is, how and who is doing this task as the city administrator? Cause to my knowledge, he's been doing more than the city administration position is always supposed to do. And, uh, I'm questioning if he taking care of other businesses, he's also like, he's actually doing his title businesses. Like, is he doing the city administrator duty on top of the other duties that he's taking care of?
Is there a response to Alderman, Alvin Soto's question?
Traditional question.
Okay, hold on one second then. Does anybody want to respond to Alderman, Alvin Soto?
I told him yes. So he is doing double the work and without getting extra pay for doing more jobs.
Okay, Alderman Myers, and then we'll come over.
All right, I have the election results. So, um, so for one, the, the mayor is, is, uh, voted on by everybody in West Chicago. Um, in Ward Seven sadly had the lowest voter turnout, 5.9%. Um, but Ward One did have 25%, which was great. Um, but for the mayor, uh, Mr. Boebel was 51% to, uh, Mr. Banana, 32%. Uh, Ward One, uh, who did that was 56% to 43%. Uh, Ward Three was Denise, 50% to 36%. And then, uh, 6% to 44% and then my word, uh, 57% to 30%. Um, each one of these wards, um, as Mayor Boebel mentioned before, had, uh, record voter turnout. And I feel like each one of these, all the, all the person positions that had competition, which, which is amazing. I've heard in the past, there's been some of these positions that have gone unbuild for years. Uh, so just as we talked before, the fact that so many citizens are getting involved and that some of them want to be part of this city council and that they want to compete for a position, I think is fantastic. I think every position should have two people running. I think the voters should have a choice.
That was kind of my point with the, uh, with bringing up the, um, the election wins. Uh, they're all double digits. Uh, they were clear majorities. Um, and the ones where the sitting members won, uh, they were running unopposed. And it, and, and, no, it, it they have the same role, the same authority, all that, but if we're looking at, if we're looking at how the voters responded to this question of change, that's what I'm talking about. Then to say that, you know, that, you know, this person won um unopposed and to use that to say, so the, so the voters really didn't want change, doesn't, doesn't make sense. That's, that's what I'm saying, is, is every place where the voters had a choice, they voted for change. Um, then. Did you want to respond to that?
Yeah.
Okay, give, give him the mic and I, oh, sorry. Yeah, send, send the mic to, on this mic deck. I just want to give him a quick chance to respond, because I, I responded to him. Sorry, I'll live instead. We'll come right back to you.
Everyone had in wards of, of five, had, or had four, two. And I, well, in all the wards, had a chance to put up somebody and in, I, I filed my paperwork like anyone else could have. They could have stepped up and I was the only one who stepped up from Ward five. Doesn't mean they didn't want change, just no one came forward and I was, and so I was reelected. So to say that there was an overwhelming response in change, it was in Ward one, three, six, and seven, there was the difference, and in mayor.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's the point, because it was citywide with the mayor and every place where we could see a difference.
Okay, so that means that they wanted a different voice as representing them from each ward. So everyone sitting here as aldermen have a vote on what passes and what doesn't.
Right.
Worked, and as mayor, as I understand it, will only has the ability to vote when to break the tie. That's my understanding.
Yes, no, that's correct. And uh, let me just, let me just say, Alderman Switek, that in no way am I uh wanting to communicate that I value your voice any less than any other council members or anything like that.
It seems like that. You're putting me down for not being
No.
For being here six years versus
Well, no, but I, but I am, I am making the statement that from a statistical analysis, the voters voted for change. Uh, and that's, that's my point. And um, I mean, you can disagree with that, that's.
I disagree. Well, no, not disagree. They, they, they wanted a different mayor. They wanted a different alderperson in one, three.
Okay.
Six and seven. That's all?
All right, noted. Um, but I, I would, I would still say that, you know, at my rule, um, my powers are not primarily um as a uh as a vote on the council. I am on the city council, I have a vote as a tiebreaker. But my, but my statutory powers uh have other, uh, are found in other areas like presiding over the meeting. So I apologize, Alderman, it's been a while that we didn't get to you, but as long as it's not a motion.
I think we're, that's where, I think the, the issue here is why we're stuck here is, is not related to change or who wants change or who's fighting change or anything like that. The issue is simply the mechanism used here to create vacancies and fill vacancies and the legality of those specifically. And that is why some people are asking about putting it off the next meeting, which is a more time to thoroughly look at that issue. Because just saying it isn't going to satisfy all the rest of us that it's done linked. And I think you could understand that. Uh, that's the issue. It's not changing, it's not, it's nothing global like that. It's the simple way this was handled and us wanting uh an assurance of legality.
Shouldn't. And I, I do understand and I respect that. Um, but the reality is um that I am confident enough in the legality of it, that I am stating my reputation and political capital on that. And if I am wrong, then um that can be overturned, but uh uh, I, I, I ultimately, again, uh, am gonna use everything uh which is, you know, statutorily in my power to do what I think the voters want me to do, which brings us back to the, 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 the change conversation. And so, yeah, okay, just hit the mayor one uh for a minute. Uh, you know, uh, the, the voters clearly by nineteen points um voted that they wanted me to be the mayor. And what I have been saying all through the um all through the, my candidacy, um, I kept saying the same things that um number one, city hall needs to change. It needs a complete um revamping, not of a physical building, but of the culture of the city hall. And so and so my promise to the people that voted me in was that I would do everything that I could to affect that change. And by you trying to force my hand to keep the same city administrator, it forced me to dig into all my statutory powers to oppose that. And so the reality is in nine minutes, we're gonna go home and, you know, I hope that, I hope that at this point, that you're gonna be willing to um, meet and talk and we can come together and um and start to bring some start to bring some um some working together, some unity um to find people to be the the, the permanent people for these positions. And um, yeah, uh, uh, Mr. Gudman is welcome to uh apply if he so desires. Um Ms. Messino is welcome to apply to be the permanent person. Um, uh, if she's uh doing a good job and we feel like that's, that's something that we want to do. Um, you know, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of people that we can look at. Um, and same thing, like, like I said to you, like, I, I don't have any desire to change the police chief. And I told, I told Chief Flurry this. Um, I think he's doing a good job. And what I've heard from the community is um is ninety-five percent positive, which is pretty good for, you know, police officers, because and you guys are always gonna get some bad press, right? But um, uh, there, there's a um there's an overwhelm, I would say overwhelmingly positive opinion that I have heard regarding Chief Flurry. And so when I met with him and, yes, I will come to you, Alderman, when I met with him, I said, um, hey, I don't even have access to any city files yet. And so, like, I think you're doing a great job, but after I'm in the role and can actually look at things, like, I haven't even seen this contract, you know, I have to file for you to get that, and sometimes that can be difficult. Um, but if, if um, I said, once I'm in office, let's sit down, you know, in the first week or so and have a conversation, but but I told them I, I don't have any uh I don't have any uh intent to replace him. I just want to do my due diligence and take seriously my role and my position. And um uh, but I, you know, that's, that's, that's where that one's at. Uh, Alderman and Davis, as long as it's not a motion.
No, I just, I'm circling back because, once again, um, you keep saying that you're appointing, you know, Miss Messino to take over Mr. Gudman and your attorney to take over Mr. Bond, when we still have an indication that nobody's clear that this is what you can do. So if Miss Messino cannot be appointed by you to take over that role, then how could she do that without having known that it was a legal action? Um, I guess that's, I'm circling back to that because that's where I think most of us are stuck. Um, from my understanding, and I, I know we're gonna just say that your attorney says this, and our attorney says that, and it's gonna go back and forth. But once again, this is the issue. If you're appointing someone to take a position and we are not certain that you legally can do that, then how can those people fill those positions? I guess is what I'm coming from.
I'm gonna ask uh Mr. Jacobson to reply.
Alright, so um, when the meeting ends in about five minutes, my suggestion was, um, ask Mr. Bound for the old Ron case that we talked about with the home rule. You'll see, it applies to IT contract. Not to an administrator, not to general counsel, not for police chief, which is a three specific things in the statute. So while it does, the home rule gives um you powers that you haven't had. In the uh syllabus, which is probably four sentences long, Readware talks about it's an IT contract for home rule. There is no case, and there is, there's actually cases specifically that say home rule doesn't have the right to modify and vote on his contract without the advice and consent of the chairman. Send that to whoever wants, but if you could spend just a minute before you actually leave today and read the, the abstract, you'll see, it only applies to an IT contract. Actually, any contracts the city can enact and enter into, the following seats, the mayor, except for those three that you guys have been arguing about. So my suggestion is, because this is an issue, and who always likes to leave attorneys anyways, read the case um and see if it even applies. Thanks.
So, um, you know, this, I, I just, so you guys don't think I'm doing something uh unworded here. Um, I want to read you the uh section of the city code that explains why I will be declaring this meeting closed without a um vote on it. Um, but uh, Alderman, as long as it's not a motion, uh, would you like to speak?
Can I move to extend the meeting?
No, I'm not entertaining. I'm not entertaining that.
Hit everyone.
That, that are, I'm writing, it's not a regularly scheduled meeting. So, Joe, I stand corrected. I would, and I would love to have a motion uh to uh go ahead.
So I'd like to move to extend the meeting to May nineteenth at six P M. That way we can extend the meeting then, and then our meeting will, on May nineteenth, we will probably proceed at that, seven P M, as usual.
So you're, you're only moving to extend it
To May nineteenth.
To May nineteenth, but at, at six P M is the, is the change from the ordinary?
Um, public affairs, let's do seven.
Seven is our home.
Yeah, so. Is that good?
Good with me?
Alright.
We need a second. Okay, Alderman, I've got dark MC, seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.